Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now six forty-five, and I will call the special work session of the Burnsville City Council to order. This meeting is being conducted both in person and online, and the city clerk will note that Councilmember Gustafson is absent. Members of the public may attend in person if they so wish, or the public can also watch this meeting online at burnsvillemn.gov/meetings, or Comcast Channel sixteen or eight fifty-nine. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join, and all of the information about the items that are going to be discussed this evening are on our meeting webpage and in the council agenda packet. So this is the continuation of all of our budget discussions, and so tonight we'll be hearing from four departments and City Manager Lindberg. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. As you said, tonight, we have our final four department strategic plan presentations for you as part of the 2024 budget process. Police, communications and community engagement, HR, and the city clerk will be presenting this evening. Just by way of reminder, all of our budget materials are found online on our website, burnsvillemn.gov/budget. You can find all of the materials in front of each night. The community has access to those materials as well, our budget calendar, and our budget transparency portal, where you can go and, at whatever level you so choose, play around with our budget and see both how revenues are taken in and how expenditures are allocated across the services that our teams provide to the community on a daily basis. Tonight wraps up our department strategic plans. Really, these are operational plans that are intended to align your strategic priorities with the work that's happening operationally throughout our departments. The next step of these strategic plans will be annual work plans that our teams will manage on a yearly basis, informed by these three-year strategic plans. We've talked about this before, but tonight will be very operational. We're going to kind of open the hood of our operations of these four departments and talk about where we are now, where we want to be, and how we're going to get there. So certainly feel free to ask any questions that you have along the way. We're going to try to be efficient with our time. Four departments is a lot, but at the same time, really good information from each of the directors who will be presenting tonight. This is, again, the last stop in these strategic plan presentations in our budget calendar. The next conversation that you will have is actually next week, Tuesday, August twenty-second, where staff will present the 2024 proposed budget and property tax levy. So these presentations are really designed to inform not only our discussion of ongoing service levels and our service inventory as part of our organizational analysis, but really, most importantly, the things that our people do day in and day out to care for the community. Following our presentation and discussion next week on the twenty-second, the council will consider the, what we've called it, our maximum property tax levy, or preliminary tax levy and budget on September nineteenth. That vote is where the council establishes the highest property tax levy that could possibly be implemented, a point at which you can't go up, but you certainly can come down. And then that leads us through the rest of the budget process, leading in to your final adoption of a budget and a property tax levy in December. So with that, if I'm understanding our order correct this evening, I'm going to turn it over to Chief Schwartz to talk about the police department.
All right. Thank you. Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Always appreciate the opportunity to share a little bit about our police department, our strategic plan. You've heard me talk about this a little bit before, but so I'll be as efficient as I can, as much as I like to talk about the police department. So, a little bit, just we'll talk about where we are now, where we're going, and then how we're going to get there. And so first and foremost, really, you know, our job is public safety, so we want to be able to provide the highest level of public safety service that we can, and we want to have that grounded in our mission and our core values. And we want to have that aligned with council priorities, of course. And so we do the protection of life, the liberty, property, we do all those things for protection, but really, everything that we do is grounded in community-oriented policing. How we go about doing that is engaging the community. So that means we have partnerships with our city staff, we have partnerships in the community, with stakeholders, with businesses, and for us, at the end of the day, it's really about building that trust, right, with the community? And so if we're, if people don't trust us, we're not going to be effective in the job that we do, and so we strive for that, and we're successful in that. So that's where we are right now. And when I, when I think about, you know, that space of where we're at, and we provide twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five services, we do that well, it's a nine-one-one response, it's very reactive, but we're also very proactive in the work that we do, and we have specialty units, and we have specialty divisions and resources and training, so that we can look to provide end-to-end services for all of our people. I mean, that, we want to have that. So we want to get right services at the right time, that is going to provide the best service to individuals or families or whatever circumstance may be going on, so those long-term solutions. And the way that we do that, there's many ways that we do that, but to highlight some of those things, we have our community engagement team, we have our behavioral health team, we have our investigations division, so we have a lot of different divisions. We have our EMS pilot, you know, that we're working on and looking at, how can we provide services to people that are struggling with opioid addiction in our communities? So we have a crime scene team. So we're looking at all these things, so we can offer people services to help them through and find a solution, so that we're not just constantly being reactive. So we work to do that as well. Another piece of what we do is emergency management and training, and so when we talk about crisis communications and crisis training, and how do we respond to emergencies in the police department, we look at prevention, we look at mitigation, how much are we prepared, what is our response going to be, and then what is our recovery? And so we do that work as much as we can on the front end to be prepared. And something that's really important for us is that we have support services staff as well. So we have civilian staff in the police department, and they are key to helping us deliver all these services to the community, and they're, they're in the background, but they're really important. And so, as is our city staff that we work with, they help us do a lot of this work as well. So it's really that team aspect that we take into how we provide services to our community. And you've heard me talk before about law enforcement continues to evolve and it changes, and we do that, we want to be on the leading edge, so we try to remain nimble in what we're providing for services. Sorry about that. And then, when we talk about aligning our, aligning our work with the strategic priorities of the council, everything we do and all of our responses, the foundation of what we do is grounded in community, right, oriented policing, being engaged, and then aligning that work with all of our partners. So from safety to sustainability, we do all these things, we do a solid job in hitting the mark on all of these deliverables, but what I think is really important is more than just, you know, hitting those marks and delivering that, is that it's not just checking the boxes. We don't just do it for those reasons. Like, we truly look at what we're doing, and for us, it's about the culture, it's about how we do it, it's about how we make those real connections with people in our community. So that, that is how our work is aligning with all of the council's strategic priorities. So if we're responding to nine-one-one calls or partnering in the community and staff wellness, you'll hear me talk about that a little bit, and just serving during crisis, all of those things. We do some of these things more than others, but we really work with the team to provide these services on all the strategic priorities that we have agreed upon and worked towards. And one other thing I'll just say about this is, when I think of, we respond to somewhere between forty-eight thousand and over fifty thousand calls for service a year in our community, that's a lot of times to have an engagement, right, and to have a good alignment with what we're doing, and so we strive to do that as well. And where are we going? I mean, you've, our strategic plan, we've looked at it, we've refreshed it, we are feeling like we're on the right track with where we're going, and so we want to continue to build our plan, right, and work the plan. We think it's good, so we want to train and support our people, and I'll talk a little bit more about this on the next slide as well, but we want to ensure the safety, right? We want to make sure we have safety in the community, that's our main job, provide the public safety. We also want to make sure our officers are safe, and we want them to have good experiences, because we know when they are having good experiences at work, they're going to translate to good experiences in the community, so that's key. So we're going to continue to work at accomplishing that. And then, of course, driving forward our mission, our values, you hear me talk about this a lot, whether it's here or at swearing-in ceremonies, badging ceremonies, we're going to drive all of these things forward, and we are going to align with the council priorities. So all of those things are working together, and that's about the culture, right, and being engaged. So, and we do those things by continuing to focus on our people and then increasing health and wellness initiatives. We, and the biggest thing to, one of the comments earlier, is we want to recruit and retain people. We want to recruit professional individuals, we want high talent, and, you know, we want good people on the front line, so when the community is interacting with people, we're, have engaged staff who, who want to be here and are going to have those good experiences. And that's not easy to do right now in law enforcement, but we're working hard at that. So how are we going to get there? Again, we're going to work our plan, and in my experience, you know, I've been here for a long time, I started as a community service officer and now as the chief, just one of the things I've learned along the way is, you know, there's a lot of pillars to organizations, and the things that I think about are people, policy, training, supervision, and discipline, and so how, you know, people being at the top of that, they're our most important resource. So looking at those things, we want to recruit for, we want to recruit people that have character, right, and they're going to display the behaviors that we want people to experience in our community. So we want people that are going to build trust, we want people that are going to create great experiences, we want them to have a positive impact on people in our community, and that means we're looking for more than just people that can technically and tactically do a job. We want to hire people that also have character, right? So they have the compassion, they have humility, they have empathy, they have these skills that we want, for a lot of their job is going to be those skills. We can train to do all of those other things, it's very hard, harder, I'll say, to train for these soft skills, and we need those skills. So those are the kind of folks that we're looking at, and how can we make those connections in the community? So that focus on people, that's how we're going to get there, for sure. We need, we need our human resources to be taken care of. And then wellness, our wellness initiative. So we're going to continue to build on everything that we do with wellness. We have kind of just gotten going over the last several years, we've put a lot of time, energy, and resources into it, as the council has helped us do that, and really, I would be remiss if I didn't mention, you know, Doc, our therapy pup, who has, you know, is our latest and greatest push towards wellness, and she is really the bright light in our police department as they're navigating different experiences and calls, but she also has been visiting with city staff, and she has been in the community, and so we're excited to see, like, where that's going to launch and how that's going to help kind of continue on our wellness initiative. So we want to continue to grow in these spaces with wellness. And then really important, of course, is building trust, so that's going to be key. We want to work on even amplifying more our community engagement efforts. So we do a good job of trying to be in the community, connecting with people, but we know that we can do more, and I think as we have added, we continue to try to add more people into community engagement, we work with our city staff on that, we're going to continue to do great things there, but that's about getting out in the community and really allowing people the chance to get to know us, right? So they can learn our story, and I always say, if, you know, to know us is to love us, and so, you know, that's kind of what we want to do, is just get out and have those experiences with people, and we're doing that, and it's pretty exciting. So I hear a lot of our folks talking about how they enjoy being out in the community, so we're going to continue to do that. And how we get there, I've talked about this, these, I won't, I'm going to get you to the next slide there. I won't talk about every single one of these things, but these are our kind of four pillars for our strategic plan. So again, it's investing in people, initiatives for health and wellness, you know, being efficient, and building trust, I mean, that's what we do. And so when I think about all of these things, I think we're in a good place, and we're just going to continue to drive forward what we have been doing, stay in alignment with the council, of course. And then I would just want to say that we're very grateful for council, City Manager Lindberg, because we've had this opportunity to also look at a staffing assessment with the Axtel Group and bring them in to help look at all of our staffing in conjunction with the CLA analysis. And so that is also going to help us get places so that we can understand, like, what are the needs that we are seeing in the community, what are the needs that we're seeing in the police department, and how do we make that unique to Burnsville, and how do we continue to push that forward? So we'll be coming back to visit with you in September with the Axtel Group to share some of those findings, and then, again, I think all of these things are building for our continued success, because we're already launching into some great successes. That is because of the work that we get from our teams here, like, all of us in the city working together and all of you helping us get there, so really appreciate that. That was as efficient as I can be without, you know, yeah. So any other questions? I'd be glad to stand for questions, but that's, that's where we are and where we're going, and we're excited about it, so.
Chief, I want to thank you and, and the whole department, because, as you said, it takes everybody, from the sworn officers to the administrative staff, to make for a great police department, so thank you for all of that. And I know that the job is very difficult. One of the things that you didn't get at, and I think it's very important for us and the community to know, is that what are the challenges that you're facing? What's not going well? That we need, the more we understand, the better it is for us to make decisions about your budget.
Right.
And what, what you need.
Yeah. So we have a lot of challenges, and the biggest challenges that we experience are in recruitment, right? So law enforcement, it's a profession that some people are, you know, had changed their minds about going into, and so this has been a slow process for us. Now, we're still finding good candidates, but it takes much longer, so, so that is a big challenge. We have challenges with just, again, why we launch our wellness initiatives is really because there's so much trauma, and there's so much trauma in the community, and then the officers are seeing that trauma, and then they're experiencing that initial trauma, and then people's secondary trauma, and it's, you know, not just officers, it's just everyone in the community, so there's just a lot happening there. So it's just a challenge to really try to keep people well in that, and then to help the community be well. It takes a lot of time, that's another thing, it takes a lot of time to work through providing these end-to-end services and really getting people the right services at the right time in those moments when they need it, and so time, you know, is a factor. But, you know, I think those are sort of the main, the main challenges that we face. You understand we have space challenges as we continue to hire individuals, and we have a great facility, but we just are outgrowing it, because there's just getting to be a lot of us, and there's getting to be a lot of divisions, and to be able to support the community expectations, we need to, you know, expand those areas, and so it's a challenge, but again, we understand there's a lot of competing interests, there's a lot that goes on in the community, a lot for you to think about, but those are, those are some of the challenges. And we see an increase in calls for service. Of course, our mental health calls for service, we have seen increases in weapons calls, just more people with weapons, that kind of thing, and so it makes the job dangerous, and it makes people sort of wonder, is this the job that I want to do for the rest of my career? Do I maybe want to make a career change? You know, how far am I into this? And I know that's been a lot of, kind of, the journey police officers have been going through, because it is, it's hard on their families and, you know, the people that care about them, and it's honorable, and they get that, but they also think, you know, maybe I can do something that's a little bit more safe, or where I get a little bit more support. And not from our council, but just like generally in the law enforcement profession, there's a lot of people that, you know, simply, you know, don't like them, or, you know, create challenges simply because of the job that they do. And so legislative changes are a challenge for us, when things change and we're not at the table to be involved in those conversations, and laws change, and then we're trying to constantly adapt to that. And some of that is good, because we need to change, but we just want to have a seat at the table, and I think sometimes that doesn't always happen, and so that can be hard. But lots of good things, too. You know, we're in a good place, people are really rallied around the mission and the values and the plan, and they appreciate the support that we're, you know, that you're giving us and that the staff, all of the city staff gives them, so we continue to, you know, focus on those things that are positive, and we'll get there.
It's a hard job, and I really like hearing you talk about that your focus is on the character, because when you look at what's happening, whether it's the young officers in, on the state level, when those two officers killed that gentleman, they only, between the two of them, only had about five years of experience. And one of the things that I've always appreciated about our officers is that they care, and they also know that they don't want to kill anybody, because they live with that for the rest of their lives, is what people don't understand, is that if you, if you're going to enter into that kind of transaction and somebody dies, they live with it.
Right.
And it doesn't go away, and they experience PTSD, but it's not just them, because I talk to their, their spouses and their families, and it affects the whole family. It affects the, all of us. So it's a, it's a difficult job, but I like that when you're focusing on hiring the character of people, whether they have, they care or they have compassion, and how they do their job. So I'm really grateful for the work that our officers do, because, boy, you see all of this stuff going around, but when they encounter an incident, there's a whole group around, you know, and the partnership with fire right now is, I mean, it has been there, but it gets stronger and stronger, especially with the work that you're doing around mental health.
And we do appreciate the relationships we have with the community, the support that we get.
Yeah.
Because we get a lot, and so we're in a good place with that.
Well, because I looked at your numbers for July, because there's always a lag.
Yeah.
And what you're doing to protect the community is really very good. I mean, there is some, an uptick in one area, I think it's in crime one, not, not serious stuff, but boy, that's all over the place, but I don't hear where there's any kind of fatality, even with those burglars.
Yeah. I think, you know, some of the main challenges around all of that is just the time it takes, right, and how many officers it takes to sort of, when you have a big incident, or even not a big incident, but just a stressful incident or a crisis incident, the time that needs to go into de-escalating and dealing with those situations can require a lot of our teams, and then other calls are still stacking, right? So, but we're, they're, they're doing great, they're working hard, and really do a good job at providing that public safety service.
Well, please extend our profound gratitude.
I will. Appreciate that.
Any other thoughts, comments?
I hope we can get recruitment.
Yeah, that's one of the toughest things.
We're like, slow and steady wins the race, we're going to get there.
Are we running any ads in some of those other cities where there might be some people?
I thought about that, I was just chatting with someone about that today, so sometimes you got to get, yeah.
We should put a billboard up.
Sometimes you just make the call and you say.
I know there's a lot of officers in Chicago looking to get jobs elsewhere.
Well, the thing is, I like what she said, when she's hiring, it's not just getting a transfer from, it's the quality and the character. So, good going, chief, it's not just, it's not just bodies.
Our chief is oftentimes far too modest about her own leadership and the strength of her team, so one of the things that you'll see, Councilmember Keeley, to your point, we know that recruitment is a challenge. Tanya came to me now several months ago, and we started talking about our CSO program. It's where, Tanya, I believe it's fifty percent of our current officers have come from.
Yeah.
We've, we've experienced extraordinary success with the program in comparison to other agencies. The chief is a very good example of, of finding the right character and the right people through that program. So we are going to suggest to the council, and you'll see in my recommended budget, still in alignment with the total FTEs that we planned in the organizational analysis for next year, a reprioritization to add some additional CSOs. The leadership team has talked about it, we're aligned, that it's a, it's a priority across the organization for us right now, to then help us to feed into those vacant officer positions. So it, very creative, uniquely Burnsville, and very much aligned with, with finding the right people at the right time for what is inarguably, from my perspective, the most difficult job out there. So we're excited about, about that approach. I think we'll see real, real results, along with all of the other creative ideas that our team has been out there with to, to recruit officers into those, into those tough jobs.
I love that you have the three ladies on there.
Yes, of course. We have to highlight our women there, yeah.
Madam Mayor, this is the first, when you open it up, this is the first big picture, and that was wonderful.
Yeah.
That was just a great, it set the tone for the whole report.
Yeah.
And obviously, a lot of, you have a lot of female officers featured, including yourself, giving out some comic book or coloring books throughout the document, and I think that's a great idea. It's awesome.
Pictures speak a thousand words.
Yeah. And I like all the, we're getting to communications, but all of the ads for police that's being pushed out through all of the social media channels, so I do my best to share, whether that's on LinkedIn, or, or Facebook, or Twitter, or I think we're also now on Instagram.
You're one of our top fans.
I know. Like it, like and share, like and share.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Okay. The next one, City Manager.
Thank you very much, chief. With that, we are going to move on to communications and community engagement. Chris will take us through that strategic plan.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thanks. As Bethany gets that pulled up there, I just wanted to quick introduce or hopefully reintroduce you all to my guests tonight. Raquel Strand is our communications manager in our department, and I brought her here tonight, one, because she's just a great person and I like having her next to me, but also because hopefully by now you all know and have noticed me waddling around, that within the next six weeks or so, I will be out attending to some family matters, and hopefully gone for a little while, as much as I love being here, I'm hoping to be out for a while, and I have a great team, I have zero concerns about being gone, but Raquel will be serving as our acting director at that time, so you'll see press releases and other things come out from Raquel while I'm out, so that, you know, just, just wanted to make sure that you all were prepped for the fact that she'll take over some of the stuff that I usually communicate on, so. All right, jumping over to our strategic plan, much like what Tanya just said and what you will hear from others tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about where we're going, where we are now, where we're going, and how we're going to get there. Keep it, keep it brief for you. Our department really considers ourselves connectors with the community and the city. We do our best to do that through a variety of ways, but in general, we consider ourselves storytellers. We do a lot of different activities in order to tell the city's story through your traditional means, but also through in-person community engagement as well, so making, making connections with the community as best as we can. We do that through multi-channel means of communication and engagement through our three work groups, communications, community engagement, and multimedia. We all work hand in hand to create great experiences for the community, telling the city's stories through video, print, digital, kind of as many methods as we can get our hands on, forming relationships with diverse audiences, as well as the whole community, and creating excellent, excellent customer service experiences for everyone who calls and visits City Hall, plus a variety of other things that we'll touch on a little bit here as we go. Much like Tanya said, our department has, everything we do touches on, on our strategic priorities. We actually have a lot of conversations in our department about the strategic priorities and how we can contribute, you know, rather than kind of sitting back and waiting, we want to make sure that we're being proactive to work with our fellow departments and to, to meet the goals of our strategic priorities organizationally. Community engagement kind of seems like the obvious strategic priority. Of course, we do a lot of initiatives with that, like our community engagement vehicle, but in our other strategic priorities as well, we, we work to accomplish things like coordinating the city's crisis communications response, managing a large digital infrastructure of, like, the web like, the website, Intranet, social media platforms, and creating sustainable partnerships. In order to continue to create those great experiences, we're committed to a couple of things. One, focusing on increasing engagement efforts across the community, providing consistent, frequent, and relevant outreach in order to build the community's trust in the city. Again, kind of echoing Tanya, everything we do kind of relies on the community having trust in city work, and so we consider that one of our highest priorities, to make sure that we've always got that in the back of our minds. And our final goal in the next few years is to improve efficiencies and workflows through innovative uses of technology. So to achieve these goals, we know we need to do a couple of things. We're gonna meet the community where they are, we say that a lot in our group, but we're gonna continue to try to do that in new ways as often as we can. We're gonna provide honest, authentic, transparent communication, and leverage technology wherever So we're jumping out of the gate in year one with some projects that are near and dear to us, like finalizing an employee community engagement toolkit that will give people, who maybe haven't had the chance to get out into the community as often as perhaps some of the other departments do, some tools and tips that they can use before they go out, some worksheets they can work through, and other steps that they can take, so they feel comfortable and confident in taking kind of traditional City Hall out to the people. We're gonna get creative about personalizing government services, and so through that, we could be a lot of things, could be social media, could be video, a variety of methods, but we wanna make sure that the community knows not only the work that we do, but kind of who's behind it, because then we've got a lot of passionate and engaged employees, and we wanna showcase that. And this one sounds boring, but it's important to us to improve some internal department procedures in order to help us achieve more together, so things about improving our own workflows and systems in order to help us do more. In years two and three, we're gonna continue to enhance the things that make us us, and also embarking on some new things, like a website redesign. We wanna make sure that those sorts of public experiences are as fresh as possible. We're gonna add a chatbot system to our website and try to leverage some new technology in some of those spaces. We're gonna work with IT, our partners in IT, to create a project request system. Again, it's a little bit more internal, but helps us be more efficient and effective, and several other things that we, that we're excited about, that both the community will see kind of outright, and that will just help us be more efficient, be more organized, be quicker about getting projects out that are a little bit more internal. I can tell you our staff loves serving the Burnsville community. We're looking forward to continuing to enhance the things we do and ways we communicate with the public. And we look forward to continuing this process with strategic plans. It's a thing we've not really done much of in our department before, and it's been good to wrap our heads around kind of where we're going and what we're doing, and actually get it down on paper. So with that, that's all I have for you tonight. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. But just thanks for your time.
Questions?
I have one very specific question. When I was reading through What's Not Going Well, number seven, difficulty finding volunteers creates challenge to keep that program running sustainably. I was just curious what that program was in reference.
Our volunteer program.
Oh, that makes sense.
Yeah. You know, kind of similar to, similar to job recruiting, right? It's hard to, I know, I feel it. When I come home from work, I don't necessarily wanna go out and go do something else, so we find that volunteers are just harder and harder to come by. And we do our best to promote our opportunities, and I think a lot of departments try to change up what volunteers can do to try to keep things fresh, but it's difficult, you know, to get people to come out in their spare time and.
I think volunteering in general is on a decline on a cultural level, unfortunately.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah.
So what do you mean about inconsistent verbiage and visual messages across the city?
This is something we, that actually Greg and I were just talking about it last week. I think that consistency, when you have, is a concern among any organization. I used to deal with it when I worked at a 12-person organization, and we're, you know, continuing to deal with it at a larger organization. Getting people on the same page about how to make your visuals look the same. Are we using the same colors and fonts, and are we using squares versus circles? Are we using similar messages to make sure that when the community receives something from the city of Burnsville, that it's identifiable as the city of Burnsville, that we're not having one piece go out written in plain language, and another piece go out written in very detailed kind of legalese, right? How do we make sure that people can have a similar experience with everything that the city puts out? And it just, it's something that I think every organization continues to just work toward. I'm not sure that it's a job that's ever finished.
I do wanna commend the media team. They work very hard. On festival days, out in the sun, Jay and his team are out there. And that's hard to be behind a camera for that many hours. And I hope our media team is hearing this, because I wanna acknowledge the great job they do, because of Party on a Plaza, everything, everything they're doing that, all of the media messages that go out. It's this group of small but mighty team that Jay leads. And so, City Manager Lindberg, I think you and I have watched those men stand out there in the hot sun for hours. And there are times when I'm thinking, we should run water to them. And we'll do that, make sure that they're well saturated with water, and, yeah, but they're, they're great.
They are great.
Yeah, they do a great job. I mean, and they're here. Whenever we're here, they're here.
Yes.
They make sure that everything works so that we can communicate to our community. And they do an excellent job.
Absolutely. We have some talented folks. And if the multimedia team would just let me get on a camera, I'm ready.
And they do a great job.
They do a great job.
Yeah. Okay. City Manager Lindberg.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, council. Next, we have our HR department. A couple of comments on this one, before I turn it over to Jenny Brody. Our HR director was not able to be here tonight, so Jenny is going to take the presentation as our Deputy City Manager over our organizational services functions. Also, you'll notice that we don't have a printed copy of the HR strategic plan in front of you. I saw it for the first time today and had some changes that I had requested of Jenny and the group, so I apologize for that. We'll make those operational adjustments, and that plan will be available to you and to the community just as soon as we're able to turn that around. I would expect within about a week's time. So with that, I will turn it over to Jenny to take you through an overview of our strategic plan when it comes to our people.
Thank you. I'm Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I'll be walking you through tonight and try to be as efficient, efficient as possible. But as we look at our strategic plan, you know, we'll look at where are we now, where are we going, and really how will we get there? In terms of the HR, the Human Resources Department, we really exist to take care of employees so that they can really do the same for our community, really working behind the scenes to make sure people and teams are supported throughout their employment lifecycle. We are the first and last points of contact with our employees through recruiting, onboarding, and care for them really everywhere in between with, you know, we work with a total rewards package, workplace injury programs, leave programs, training, and more. Where are we now? We work three areas. We, you know, we were working in our primary functions, really, talent management, recruiting, motivating, and retaining employees. And the employee lifecycle, as I mentioned before, you know, we're the first and last points of contact, really making sure we get employees on-boarded, trained, cared for. We wanna make those connections, and it's important that we're making those connections with employees and caring for employees. And providing manager support. That's really probably, probably our biggest focus, and really our most important thing right now is really building culture through managers, so we wanna provide managers with tools and resources that they need to best care for their teams. As we look at how our service aligns with our strategic priorities, number one priority, I'll say it again, building cultures through managers is really one of the most important things we're doing right now, and through that, providing tools, tools for them to care for and engage their teams, and make sure, and make sure employees have resources so they can appropriately care for their, care for their teams, care for the community in terms of community engagement. In the area of safety, you know, we wanna make sure employees have a safe work environment, so we're providing safety training and other resources in those areas. What do we wanna accomplish? Manager support. We wanna make sure that we're supporting our managers, making sure that employees have a supportive work environment, right? So those two go hand in hand. We're focused on employee well-being. We wanna make sure that we're best caring for our employees, so they can best care for the community, make sure employees' needs are met, and give them the tools and resources to really do their jobs. We also wanna focus on employee-centered service, making connections and building relationships with employees, and collaborating, really, and looking at our process and making sure that they're, you know, employee-focused and employee-friendly. How will we get there? We'll continue to support our managers and really give them the tools and resources so that they can best support our employees. We'll also focus on employee well-being and really looking at our processes and systems, and making sure employees have good experiences at work. We really wanna want our employees to have good experiences so they can provide that for the community. In terms of the steps that we're going to take, as we look at these three areas of manager support, employee well-being, and employee-centered service, you know, we're working to recruit and onboard the org analysis positions, coordinating great recruiting and good onboarding experiences, providing support for managers, and caring for, caring for our teams, supporting performance management activities, and monitoring pay and benefits, and making sure we're, you know, we're comparing to the market and we're keeping up with the market, and evaluating and recommending, you know, easy-to-understand and, you know, policies. And employee-centered services, making sure we're cross-training and we've got backup support structures for resiliency, you know, making sure we've got our processes documented and we're implementing those in the, you know, most effective way possible. Caring for employees, we'll be also implementing a new HRIS system in the coming years, so there's, there's a lot that we've got in the next year to do, and we're really focused on that, you know, that employee experience. Year two and three, we're gonna continue to enhance our recruiting and talent, oh, talent management efforts. We really wanna motivate and attract the right people for the right jobs at the right time, and making sure we have the systems and processes in place to support, support our managers and our employees. And we wanna meet the community needs. One of our, one of our organizational values is excellence, and we really wanna provide the best resources to support that. We wanna equip managers and support managers, and ultimately caring for our employees, looking at our processes, and making sure we're building those with the best, you know, best interests of our employees and community in mind. And with that, I will take any questions.
Any questions? Kara?
So with the changes that we made in employee benefits, how are those being received by staff?
I, I think they're being received pretty well. I think, you know, I think it's benefited a lot of, you know, has provided a lot of support for employees during, you know, at various times of their lives. I mean, I think one of the, one of the great things about kind of the benefits that we implemented is, it isn't just for one point in your life, it really does kind of meet employees where they're at, right? Whether that be, you know, I know we've got, you know, in terms of caring for, caring for family members, you know, when, with birth of children, I think it really does provide that support, and I think employees feel cared for in that way.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Yep.
Just, it's great information, and we obviously, we feel like we've invested a lot in attention and benefits to hopefully set ourselves apart and be a more attractive city to come work for. So I appreciate the questions. I was curious, too, I know we're just a short term into the change, right? It hasn't been around for several years, but it's good to hear some positive feedback. And if I may, I'll just add on, I forgot to say something about our Communications Department. I'm working with Raquel and Chris on the festival marketing-related stuff, and just how on top of the game, all the organization, the communication, it's been fantastic, and it's, it's always been great. I just took maybe more notice this year because I got a nice list of, here's a punch list of things we need, and I just really feel good about the strength of that department.
Yeah, they do put out all of those social media, and so I really like it, because I like.
Same here. Yeah. I'm usually doing it from the festival now, for, instead of my job, but my, my other ones I spend more time on, where I'm following the city. Even though I've liked the city stuff on my own personal feed, over and over again, it doesn't come in to my personal feed that often, so I see everything through the festival Facebook when I'm logged in as that, and I can see everything in it.
Do you not use your own personal feed as much? Because I, I see it in both my personal feed and on my.
I've gone, I went to the city, and I went, and I liked like twenty things, right? So the algorithm will pick up that I keep interacting and liking and commenting, and it's still not putting it in my personal feed the way it is the festival feed, so it's just meta, and how they manipulate things.
It is a reality we face. I would say that one of the areas of the most growth and strength that we have from a communications perspective, most recently, has been in the social space, right? Our team really has stepped up the game in that area, so certainly something to be proud of. I'll also go back, Councilmember Schultz, to your question, Councilmember Keeley, to your comment. One of the goals that I set for myself this year was to be even prouder to work for Burnsville, to be part of this community and this organization. And frankly, the council's leadership and decisions that you've made from a total rewards, from a compensation perspective are top of the list from my perspective, something absolutely to be celebrated. We have a ways to go, from my perspective, the maximizer in me, to make sure that we're really communicating that well internally and realizing those benefits, but that is, again, part of the strategic priority that we have from an HR perspective and from an internal communications perspective. So absolutely something to be celebrated, and something that I am extraordinarily proud of and excited about when it comes to really redefining how this organization is known internally and how we're known externally. It is, it will be, it will be a single greatest driver of change from my perspective, so we're certainly hearing that from our, from our organized labor groups, and more informally from, from employees as a whole, so.
I'm not gonna say it as well.
I'm not going to say it as well, but I agree. That's one of the things I wanted to say. We really appreciate the council's support for, for the changes we made last year, I think.
We're going to see returns on that investment.
Yeah, we are, we are.
You know, I'm, I'm looking forward to being able to look back at it and, and, and celebrate it more. Because I, I do think it will become definitive of who we are and, and how we go about caring for people so we can do the same for the community.
Yeah.
I, I've met several of our new public work staff over the last month, and they are blown away by the benefit package and the time that you can get for family, mentally, whatnot. So it, it is having an effect, bringing in line staff for sure, so.
Okay.
Thanks, Jenny.
Thank you.
Much appreciated.
Yeah.
We will move on to our last, but certainly not least, department and presentation of strategic plans. The City Clerk's Office. Michelle will take that for us.
That's the largest I voted sticker I've ever seen.
We should increase our size of those stickers.
Go bigger.
That's how big they really should be, right? Two and a half big diameter, whatever.
Be a bumper sticker.
That is a big sticker. Okay, I'm Michelle Collins, City Clerk, and we'll talk about the strategic plan this evening. We'll talk about where we are now, where we're going, how we're going to get there. Our mission is about, one of the things we do primarily is like connect people to other people and to information. Sometimes it's connecting people to the council by helping them with how they can approach the council at a council meeting. Sometimes it's by communicating to you through email or voicemail. Sometimes people just need information and we help them get information. But the basics of what our office does, especially during an election year, is election administration. We also oversee records management and manage business licensing. And we support the council with meeting management, agenda packets, minutes, and, and all the documents that are associated with those meetings. When thinking about our, how our service aligns with our strategic priorities, I think about how we oversee safety through business licensing, and also there's safety involved with elections. One of the things that has come up in recent elections is that our election judges are more concerned about safety and safety procedures. So that's something that we have had to address specifically. Also, we think very severely, it's very, very much about security with our elections. When it comes to engaging our community, we are looking to continue enhancing our voter engagement and also improving online services so that our community has that access. We have new organizational trainings that we're trying to do in our, to help improve our culture. Things like record retention training, agenda management system training, those things. We have the efforts that our Code Review Task Force is putting into, to update our city code is helping with our community vibrancy. And we create a lot of efficiencies and eliminate paper processes through all of our technology improvements and updates. Where are we going? Well, let's see. 2024 is going to be a big election year. If you remember in 2020, we implemented the first presidential nominating primary in as long as I can remember. And that will happen again in 2024, the first Tuesday in March. Absentee voting for that will begin in January of 2024. So it does, seems like it's a long way away, but it's actually not that far. We also have some new requirements that the legislature has adopted for us to implement in 2024. And that will be things like an extended absent, or in-person direct balloting voting period. It used to be six days before the election, and that's going to go to eighteen. It's also going to include some evening and extra weekend days that we did not, we were not required to do before. And we're also looking at partnering with Dakota County to create some efficiencies in mail service for our absentee voters. In records management, we're currently working with the Code Review Task Force to update the city code. We're doing a comprehensive update to the Policies and Procedures Manual as well as the Record Retention Schedule. We're implementing some new functions in our data request system. This will improve security and efficiency for us. And how will we get there? I think we're going to focus on leveraging our strengths and focus on collaboration. That's not only within our department, but amongst other departments as well. This is especially important during elections when we experience high workloads. I, we routinely get assistance from other departments. I think many of you know that Molly and Alicia from Engineering helped us out a great deal in elections. Also Deb Cobbins from Recreation helps us out a great deal. There are other departments that well, as well, people from other departments that also help us. In the next year, we're looking at a lot of things going on with the upcoming elections. Enhanced community engagement efforts, expanding the early, the early voting period from six to eighteen days. The, working out the details of that partnership with Dakota County for the mail absentee services. In our business licensing, we're looking at improving the communication for the license renewal process. One of the problems we, we saw this year was that we didn't get as many of our renewal licenses to be completed by the expiration date. And we're, so we're going to try to figure out what we can do better to make that process go smoother. And what kind of community, maybe we need some sort of improved communication efforts. I mean, we send emails out to them and those kinds of things, but what else can we do to help improve that process so that things are getting done in a timely manner? We also are going to stay involved with the upcoming cannabis licensing as that develops with, through the state. And that's going to be probably something along the lines of somewhere between liquor licensing and tobacco licensing, I think. We're not exactly sure how this is all going to come out. But that's something that we're working to stay involved in. With our policy and records, reimagining the Policies and Procedures Manual, it's, it's a been around for a very long time, and we think that there's some overhaul that can be done to this manual and really provide some clarity for not just staff, but for the council as well, to make sure that we're very clear in communication. We're going to leverage our record management resources. Sometimes we, we do have some laser fish processes and things like that that we use to create efficiencies in our departments. And we're hoping that, fingers crossed, before the end of 2023, that the Code Review Task Force will get through Title IX of the city code. And at that point, the, then Title X will, the Planning Commission will start taking part of that process, yes. Let's see.
Congratulations.
And looking forward, we will continue to focus on our procedures, communication, and engagement. And also in preparation for 2026, we've got to prepare for that new cannabis licensing requirement. And we also need to prepare for the transition of in-person absentee direct balloting. Is what they technically call it today. We kind of refer to it as early voting, but technically it's just a, a different type of absentee voting. And the legislature has approved full early voting, and that is expected to start in 2026. This means that when you go to vote early, you're not going to have to fill out an application.
Yeah.
And you're just going to be able to check in and vote like you do on election day. So that's, we're all kind of excited to see how that plays out.
Less paperwork for you.
It will be less paperwork, yes. There's a lot of applications. When we talk about meeting community needs, I think for us, it's about providing great voting experiences and reducing barriers through online access to services and information. Stand for any questions.
Well, it seems like you're moving ahead and being prepared for next year because it's going to be a very busy year.
Yes, Madam Mayor, we actually have already reached out to all of our polling sites to confirm that not only will they be available for the primary and general election like they were, have been used to for so many years, but as a reminder that we are again, going to need the facility in March for the presidential nominating primary.
And then, and then there's the primary for the city.
Yes, and then the primary for the city will be in August and then the general election in November, as is norm, as it usually is.
And the city and the legislature at the same time?
Yes, yes.
And I think that needs to be clear to everybody that, that the primary for the city and the legislature and the county is all in August. The presidential is, the one is in March.
Correct.
Yeah, so that they understand.
Correct. And that is a party primary.
Yeah.
So it's a, it's a different type of election where you have to pick a party ballot.
Yeah, yeah.
To vote for that. Also, one of the things that we're doing to prepare, we've already started to prepare, is reaching out to some of our election judges. Because they're licensed, because they're certified for a two-year cycle for that presidential nominating primary, we, we seek out the election judges that were trained in the last election cycle. And we have to make sure to contact them because a lot of them are snowbirds. And we don't know if they're going to be back in time to be trained and, and ready to go for the March elections. So we found that out during our very first presidential nominating primary, that a lot of them are not going to be here in February and March. And so we have to make sure that we have enough staff on hand.
Okay.
Why do they leave?
Anyone?
I don't understand.
We'll find out in a few months.
Mayor, you ask, you ask a good question as we enter into a busy election season. One of our roles is to make sure that we're communicating and connecting really well with our, with our community. And all of the efforts that Michelle and her team do to create a great voter experience can only be enhanced by our team coming around, coming around those important staff and volunteers to make sure that we're communicating well on how different types of elections work and what the voter experience is. So I'm very excited about Michelle and her team's commitment to engagement and the collaboration across our departments to make sure that we have really great elections communication. That, that's an area where we can continue to, to support the elections function in the Clerk's Office across the organization. So I'm very excited about that.
And I know that in 2020, you had some challenges with some of our older election judges who have been here for a long time and were very concerned about their safety. That some of them even dropped off, and you had to go out and, and, and try and get more volunteers. And I'm just wondering, we have one more party on the plaza and preparing for your, probably all your snowbirds going away. Maybe you might want to be at Party on the Plaza to engage the community and letting them know that you're going to need some help for the January.
We, we have gotten a, a really great feedback from our existing election judges, and a lot of them are confirming that they will be back in time to participate.
For the March?
For the March election. So we're really excited about that. And we, in Burnsville, have been so blessed. We have never had to scramble to find dozens of election judges like some communities have. Actually, in recent years, we've, we've actually sent some to other cities because we've had more than we needed.
Please tell me it was Bloomington. Please tell me it was Bloomington.
We, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a great problem to have, especially it, and like you said, in 2020, a lot of, we had many election judges that just felt like this was not the right time for them to get out and among their community because of the pandemic. And a lot of them did stop serving as election judges. In 2020, we had approximately fifty percent brand-new election judges.
And I remember that.
We did not struggle to find a lot. Everybody, we had so many people that stepped up to fill in. We're some of that senior population that were stepping out, and, and they stepped up and filled in for that. So it was really great.
But it's also very nice that the election judges that we have that used to live in Burnsville and moved out of Burnsville still come back and work our, our elections because they like what, how we do things here in Burnsville. And, and one, and one person comes all the way from Plymouth?
Yeah, um, yeah, we actually have quite a few election judges that have moved away over the years. You know, like lived in Burnsville for many years and then all of a sudden moved away. Yet there is one that lives on the north side of the city that still drives to Burnsville to work. We've had some others that have moved to Lakeville Savage, those types of things that still come to Burnsville and, and work for me. So I really appreciate the fact that they continue to show their support for us, even though they don't live here anymore.
We have an election, excellent elections team.
Yeah. Yeah. Anything else? Well, members of the council, there is nothing else to come before us this evening. And City Manager Lindbergh, we look forward to the next budget meeting where we, all of these pieces that we have been working on with you since February are all now going to come together on the 22nd, one of August, or whichever day.
That's correct. I believe that's next Tuesday, if the calendar in my head is correct. So August 22nd, we'll be back with the conversation and the proposed preliminary budget and levy.
Yeah, all of these things that we've been looking at and studying throughout the months are all going to come together in a budget format.
So we talked about it at our July 18th work session, budget work session, the CAP discussion. But last year, we developed a, a, a new financial management plan that kind of set the course for the next, at the time, the next five years. That plan targeted a 7.63% year-over-year property tax levy increase. The good news is, is we have a plan. The plan's working. And the staff presentation that you'll see next Tuesday will be how we plan to, to meet that target and, and peel back all of the layers of what we've talked about to this point in time, so. That's our plan for next week.
Okay. If there is nothing else to come before the body, we stand adjourned by acclamation.